I want to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes, all participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, United States of America, and to the Republic, which is standing as one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. We'll begin with correspondence. Nicole is not here, so I'm going to reprise my role of last year as the clerk. So we received the following correspondence: A letter dated July third from Mr. Jerome Noonan advocating for renovations to the two existing middle schools; An emailed letter from Ms. Elizabeth Morgan dated August third regarding the press release for the first annual Long Meadow Pride celebration to be held on September twelfth; An email from Dr. Sally Haig dated July thirtieth regarding an equity audit. We received a series of emailed letters regarding mask wearing for the upcoming two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year from the following people: Francis Nostemsky on July fifteenth, Danielle Goodman on July thirty-first, Bernadette and Mike Dunurban on July thirtieth, Jeremy Dugan on August second, Bernadette Dunurban on August second, a letter signed by forty-two parents on August second, Meg Streck on August second, Christina Tuie on August second, Allison Parkes on August second, Ariel Louder Smith on August second, Margaret Capleta on August second, Jane Matolski on August third, Aubrey Rowe on August fourth, Sarah Hunter on August fifth, and Douglas Lamont on August fifth. Next up is approval of minutes. There is a possible motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a roll call vote. Ronan?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes. Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Visitor comments. I know that we have a bunch of visitors who are here today, and it's great to see visitors at our meeting. Just a reminder to raise your hand, so you can either do it with your video on, or you can use the raise hand function, either one. And I'll call on folks, and just a reminder that we try to stick to our three-minute time limit for visitor comments. So I see that Bernadette Dunurban has her hand raised, so Bernadette, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So my name is Bernadette Dunurban. I live at one eighteen Blueberry Hill Road. I'm the mom of four boys, K one, fourth and seventh grade. I'm speaking tonight to advocate for the adoption of the DESI guidelines for recommended but not mandated masking and other COVID-related protocols. Vaccines greatly reduce the risk of severe illness from COVID for the adult population. Those that want to be vaccinated have been. Massachusetts and particularly Long Meadow have very high vaccination rates. COVID has never been a significant risk to children in the context of other risks that were always assumed in order to send them to school, seasonal influenza, for example. Masks give some parents a feeling of safety and security, and that is fine. They can choose to have their children wear them. Parents who feel the harm done by masking exceeds the perceived benefits should have the same right to choose. Masks are not harmless. For several children, masks serve as a constant reminder that they should be afraid, causing anxiety. Social development is harmed as kids struggle to understand facial expressions. The inability to pick up on facial cues causes misunderstanding and frustration. Speech development is strained for younger learners. Breathing is made more difficult. There is skin irritation. Bacteria build up on masks, particularly after using a public restroom in a school. Masks dehumanize and suppress individual expression. I could go on. My children have never had to engage in a practice without merit or something that my husband and I don't believe in, simply to make other adults feel better, and I won't let them participate any longer. Please do not supersede DESI's guidance with your own mandates based on your personal feelings and judgment. This time last year, your best thinking resulted in a vote to keep schools closed while there was close to zero active COVID cases in Long Meadow. That was this committee's judgment, and it was wrong. It wasn't the last fear-based decision made by the committee in the name of safety. Moving off the self-imposed six-foot spacing standard to enable five days a week in-person learning only happened after DESI announced it would be mandated. Children in school have paid a disproportionate price for the overall COVID response for the past eighteen months with masks, canceled sports and extracurricular activities, isolated classrooms and cafeteria arrangements, rigid contact tracing judgments, and on-and-off school closures. Parents went along with all of this. This summer has been a beautiful respite for my children and others from masks and countless other school rules and restrictions. Re-implementing these now would be cruel. Enough is enough. If you continue to impose mandates rather than relying on DESI expertise, I encourage, I encourage parents to simply not comply if that is the only path to change, myself included. I would rather you physically deny my children the right to learn with an uncovered face every morning than allow them, than allow you to instill in them irrational fear, anxiety, and isolation behind a mask. None of this is personal. I know some of you outside of your role on the committee. I appreciate you are all volunteers. I simply ask you to all have some humility and rely on the DESI guidelines rather than thinking you know better. They are paid professionals and trained that have access to data and insight that you do not. You don't know better than them. Please follow the DESI guidance. With thanks, Bernadette and Mike Dunurban.
Thank you. We will move to Aubrey Rowe.
Hi, thank you. My name is Aubrey Rowe. I live at two forty-four, two forty-five Kenmore Drive in Long Meadow. My daughter will be an incoming kindergartner at the Wolf Swamp Elementary School. I'm talking tonight to support mandatory masking at minimum in the elementary schools. While vaccine uptake is high in Long Meadow, children under the age of twelve are unable to be vaccinated, and so masking is the only protection that they have. While we could leave this to an individual family's choice, masking prevents other children, especially those who are vulnerable. My family has immunocompromised family members, and if my daughter were to bring home a case of COVID nineteen, it could easily be passed to one of them, and there could be a very severe outcome. I know I'm not the only person, and I know my job, my child doesn't have any pre-existing medical conditions, but I'm sure there are children in the school for whom that is not the case. I understand that masking is difficult. My daughter has been masking for the past year at her preschool where she attends full-time. She has managed to learn, to grow, and to build relationships with other children. I agree that she's had an excellent time of it this summer when she's been able to be outside at camp and hasn't had to mask as much. But the disruptions that are caused when the school has to shut down because there has been a COVID outbreak, which did happen at our preschool, are extremely disruptive and cause learning disruption and are emotionally difficult for the children to deal with, in addition to the unnecessary testing that they may end up having to go through. So I would ask that you follow the guidance, not of just the Massachusetts Department of Education, but that of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC, which recommends mandatory masking in environments and in communities where there is widespread COVID, which currently hand and gummy does fall under. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Jeremy Dugan.
Good evening to the members of the Long Meadow School Committee. I am Jeremy Dugan of fifty-two South Park Ave. and a parent of four Long Meadow Public School students, a rising sixth grader, a third grader at center, a second grader at center, and a rising kindergartner at center. I'm sorry, a sixth grader at Williams this year. I want to reiterate what Bernadette shared and thank her for her message. I'll continue. For the past seven years, we've enjoyed great educational success for all of our children and hope that that continues. I am speaking today to urge Long Meadow School Committee and the Long Meadow Board of Health to make smart and logical decisions with respect to our students' learning outcomes based on the data and not on emotion. The policies enacted in Long Meadow School District must be focused on providing the best educational environment possible for our student population. As you know, Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education issued the guidance that all districts and schools will be required in-person, full-time, five days a week this fall, for which I am extremely thankful for that. They also issued guidance on masking, vaccination, testing, and contact tracing, and quarantine protocols. DESI makes strong recommendations but goes no further than that, and my request is that the Long Meadow School Committee echo this same policy and go no further. I want to encourage the Long Meadow School Committee to empower families on making the decision on masking and vaccination because of facts and circumstances around COVID nineteen and the health outcomes of our school-aged children. Massachusetts, in Massachusetts, in the last fourteen days, children under the seventeen years of age are likely to be administered, administered, admitted to the hospital at zero point five admissions per one hundred thousand population, and in the New England region, that is zero point one one per one hundred thousand populations. These numbers continue to be astronomically low in New England, while other areas of our country continue or start to struggle with this. Yes, COVID cases are rising in children, however, their health outcomes continue to be from asymptomatic to mild. In Long Meadow, the town's fourteen-day average daily incident rate is seven point six four, and this equates to one case per day in our town with a population of around fifteen thousand. In fact, in the last fourteen days, there have been only sixteen cases, and there have only been one thousand one hundred and fourteen cases in eighteen months, which averages out to just two cases per day. What has made Massachusetts and Long Meadow safer? Adult vaccinations. Our community has done a tremendous job of getting to this priority, and our entire community is better off for it. Our community has done a really good job of making good, sound, logical decisions. I want to make sure that that continues and to see that there are no overreactions. While COVID nineteen can be dangerous for high-risk populations like the elderly, those in long-term care facilities, medical workers, and those individuals with complex health issues, it is not a significant risk to our children. What is a risk to our children? Continued mitigations that disrupt and delay our children's learning. If you look at the news, public information officers and local officials regularly have to remove their masks to get their information across to the public. Imagine the struggle a kindergarten student has with pronunciation, reading, and speaking when their mouth and their teacher's mouths are hidden by masks. Imagine a child with behavioral challenges not able to read facial expressions for going on three school years. This disrupts the learning environment. Our children are entering their third school year, being disrupted by this virus, yet schools and school-aged children have been proven by multiple studies to not be the source of community spread. The massive disruption not only has an immediate effect on meeting educational milestone benchmarks today, it will also have a dramatic and nationally strategic impact on our nation and our nation's industries over the next several decades. It will be nearly impossible for our children to catch up, and it is time to recognize this and bring education back to normalcy. As I said at the beginning, I ask the school committee to not require, to go further than the DESI guidelines, which strongly recommends but does not require masks. No further changes or modifications are required, and I thank you for your time as volunteers and for caring members of our community for your continued work, and thank you for considering my testimony.
Thank you. Next up is Camille.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Unfortunately, my, my kids use the Zoom. My name's Ben Riordan. I live at one seventy-two Viscount Road. I have two daughters that attend Blueberry Hill Elementary School, and I'm here to advocate for mandatory mask-wearing on campus with, as that really being the only solution to keep our children safe during this year, right? We've seen that herd mentality works. It's working with adults, and it's worked with children in the past, okay? I know statistics are powerful, and per two thousand and seventeen, when you look at the mandatory vaccines for our children in the Long Meadow school system, we had ninety-three percent of our children that were vaccinated for Hep B, ninety-three for DTAP, ninety-six for polio, ninety-eight for MMR, ninety-eight for chickenpox, and we don't see any of these things any longer, okay? We're not there in Massachusetts from a vaccination perspective for adults, or even for folks ages twelve plus. Per the state website today, we're at sixty-four percent, and that's zero kids twelve and under, okay? The CDC, with the Delta variant coming out, the CDC recommendation is to stay masked in public areas, even if you're vaccinated, point blank. If you're not vaccinated, right, then you have to wear a mask. The reality is, is that on our, currently, it's my understanding that our staff in Long Meadow are not required to disclose if they're vaccinated or not, which leads us to a specific risk to go ahead and bring that on campus if we're not, if we're not required to disclose. So if they're not required to disclose, then we go ahead and wear masks. When you look at the health and safety of our kids overall, right? In January of two thousand and twenty, pre-pandemic, right? The flu and the high likeliness of the flu being transmitted amongst our children in schools was high to very high per the Massachusetts website. And after the mask-wearing, it has been minimal, minimal when you look at the infection rate for influenza among our children. We are very uncertain about the future and what it holds. What we know in the past, over the last year and a half, is that there's two ways to combat COVID nineteen. One is the herd mentality and vaccines. We're getting there. Two is wearing masks. If we're not going to protect our children from either, what are we doing here, right? We need to then think about what is the, what is the community of children in Long Meadow look like as a whole? Because a lot of folks, when you think about it, are thinking about what's, what's good for, you know, my kid, my group of kids, rather than thinking about what's the entire group of individuals inside of the town, and what do all of the kids need in order to have a strong, strong education, no matter if it's the All-American on the soccer team, or if it's somebody in an art class, or if it's somebody that's going through a life-threatening illness? Because the reality is, is that in our community today, there are children that are extremely vulnerable, okay? I have one of them. I'll be completely honest with you. Those kids are entitled to the exact same education that the All-American on the soccer team is entitled to. Virtual learning is going away, so those kids are not going to have the opportunity to interact with their peers on a regular basis if they're not allowed to go into the school because we're not wearing masks. The no masks will then force those kids into getting tutors or getting a full five oh four, or figuring out ways that they need to leverage resources, additional resources from the town that ultimately pulls away from the quality of education that we're giving to kids inside the school buildings today, okay? So when you look at it, if we're not going to vaccinate, we don't require any vaccines, you know, at the, for, for, you know, the administration and the teachers, we have proof that masks work, right? There's uncertainty onto where we're going to go with the Delta variant, but we know where we've been with COVID and the fact that the vaccine and masks work, right? So there's no time to gamble now to say, well, I think it's going to work, so we go ahead and make a decision not to do masks right out of the gate. And then third, we need to think-
Ben, if you could, if you could, Ben, if you could wrap it up, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. So we need to provide a safe environment, and that's what I'm asking you to do, is to think of every single child inside of the school system, provide a safe environment for them so that we can provide, you know, and our kids can go to school five days a week in person. Anarchy isn't the answer, and we want to be able to learn over time. I please implore you to go ahead and make masks mandatory in school this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Other visitor comments? I do not see any other raised hands. All right. Thank you to our visitor comments. Again, we, we welcome visitor comments. We are happy to get them. And I see just under the wire, Katie Hastings. You're up.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, great. Thank you. I was not going to speak tonight. I wanted to just sit quietly and listen to all the responses, so I have nothing prepared, nothing written. As Marty O'Shea knows, I have a very high passion for our children and for unmasking our children. First, I would like to say that too much emphasis is put on these masks. The emphasis, I can't even speak English. I'm so annoyed. We are arguing on both sides whether masks work or masks don't. I fully believe that they are not working. Tell me a story of a child who can sit in a desk for six to seven hours in a day and properly wear a mask. These masks are supposed to be changed every half an hour and properly disposed of. We all know that is not happening. I also have a story of my nine-year-old daughter, last year at recess with her best friend who lives across the street, who, mind you, have, have been playing together the entire year along with at least twenty other neighborhood kids. She was at recess with her friend, and her teacher said, Charlotte, you need to stay away from your friend. And Charlotte looked at her teacher, and she said, wait a second, second. This doesn't make any sense. I'm with her after school every single day without a mask, sitting in the same couch, sitting in the same house, having sleepovers, and neither of us have died. It, it's a horrible burden we're putting on these children. We are making them fearful of bringing a disease home to their grandparents, to their parents. But now the grandparents and parents have had a chance to be vaccinated. Anyone in Massachusetts who wants to be vaccinated can be. We cannot protect every single person from coronavirus. Also, we are forgetting the fact that kids need to see facial expressions. They need to see a friendly smile. They need to see lips. They need to see their teacher's full face. Masks impose fear, and, and they, they are just absolutely, I can't, I, I can't even, I could go on and on about how crazy this makes me, but I also want to focus on the suicide rate amongst students. It has gone up over three hundred percent throughout the country. Drug use, unsupervised children while they were not in school. Masks are not the answer. Why aren't we focusing on hand sanitizing, hand washing, not sending our children to school when they are sick? If our parents in Long Meadow could be more responsible with that, we could save so many people from having COVID cases. Also, we all know that children are not affected from coronavirus. There was just a study from John Hopkins University that came out last week or the week before stating that the three to four hundred deaths among children in this country, which is very minimal, mind you. If you remove cancer, leukemia, and many underlying conditions, the death rate amongst children is zero. We cannot let them bear the burden for the elderly and the immunocompromised. Let's start talking about getting healthy, exercising. Obesity is the number one killer, well, the number one underlying condition for COVID besides old age. So let's start talking about taking care of ourselves, being healthy, exercising, washing our hands, and staying home when you're sick. There's absolutely no reason these kids should be masked, and I will not participate in it any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah.
Hi, Sarah Hunter, I assume? Hello?
Yes, sorry, Sarah. Yeah, Sarah Hunter. Go for it.
Yes, sorry. Hi, my name is Sarah Hunter. I'm a new parent to the Long Meadow Public School District. We're choicing our five-year-old son in for his kindergarten year this year, and my partner is also a teacher in the Long Meadow schools, and I wrote him an email earlier this week, but I just wanted to just voice public support for universal masking for all elementary school students as well as teachers. It keeps my whole family safer, my wife. And also my son, my son does have a disability. He has autism. It's really hard for him to read facial expressions and communicate, and I, I've seen that with a mask on, it's harder, but it was also really hard for him to barely go to school last year. So I'd rather him go to school and be safe and keep his friends safe. And yeah, so I just wanted to put that out there and thank you all for your service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alfred Liu.
Sorry, I was muted. Hi, this, I'm Alfred. I have two kids, both going to Blueberry Hill. Obviously, I'm not prepared, so I don't have a huge load of statistics to report, but there are a few points that I want to make and clarify. The first thing that children can never get really sick under COVID nineteen is actually false. If you read New York Times article published, yes, on the ninth, actually, you can actually see that there are severe long-term impacts on a significant portion of children who actually got COVID. So the conclusion that somehow mysteriously children are not going to get seriously sick under COVID nineteen is actually not correct. Second, the current Delta variant is a different animal. Okay, speaking of data analysis, I do data analysis on daily basis. I do it for historical analysis, do it for forecasting, so I am a data analyst expert. So what the point I want to strike is that the Delta variant, it's much more contagious, and the current vaccines are much less effective in preventing infection. It does prevent severe illness and hospitalization and death, but in terms of preventing spreading, it's not that effective, okay? Last point I want to make is in general about prevention and risk management. The thing about prevention is that you incur the cost, but don't often see the benefits. The more effective the prevention is- The more effective the prevention is, the less likely you're going to see the benefit, because the less likely you're going to see an outbreak. So of course, a lot of times we focus on the cost side. But we actually, we don't even need to look beyond the border. We actually have other states where we can see, uh, in Texas and Florida, the children is actually making a significant portion of the hospitalized COVID patients right now. So, and the, um, the spread of this Delta variant, in one day, one person can spread it to nine versus one spread to three with the original strain. So if we want to look forward, not backward, um, I think we should consider all of this. I fully understand that, you know, nobody wants to wear masks the whole day. And it's actually, it is difficult for a child to wear it. But I think it's for the benefit of all of us, all of the children's, uh, especially in the elementary school, uh, in which none of the children, right, none of them is vaccinated. So I want to point that out. And also, there is a experiment. Actually, there's an experiment done by two professors from University of Tokyo. So even if you put the worst class mask, which basically does not really block a lot of things, if two people actually both wear it in the same narrow space, it actually reduce the, uh, the virus load by sixty percent. Okay, so that is a significant benefit, because it does require a huge load of virus to infect people. Without prop, with proper ventilation, with very simple mask, okay, we could actually reduce or minimize the risk of spreading COVID, okay, among our elementary school students, at least. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other new visitor comments? Again, uh, just to thank the folks who, who spoke up tonight. As we always say, we, we read all of, all of us read all of the emails that you send to us. We appreciate, uh, the feedback you give to us in writing and in person. Um, so thank you very much for coming. And I, I also appreciate that we can respectfully disagree and, and talk respectfully to each other and, and recognize that, you know, different people have, have different opinions on this complicated topic. So thank you. All right. We are going to move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Gianna.
Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to, um, recognize, I had a chance to run over to the first responder law enforcement, um, family, family event over by Russell Field, and it was just awesome. So I just wanted to thank all of the, the parents and guardians and, and children and families who attended that and to all of the, uh, first responders who put it on. It was amazing. There was the old helicopter getting ready to take off. And people were just out there having a good time, talking to each other, picnicking, and, um, you know, speaking with our first responders and, and just, it, it was really, really great. And it was just really a reminder of how when we can come together as a community in, in positive ways, um, that it just makes experiences for all and especially our children, just, you know, by modeling that positivity. So it was really great to, to see that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Gianna. Um, well said. Uh, Susie.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to share a, a quick, um, thank you and, and also recognize the, uh, administration for their work, um, on equity and inclusion. Because, um, Blueberry Hill School this year did a one, one book, one community, um, uh, book read for the entire school. And, um, my daughter in particular is on her second read of the book, which is amazing. And, um, it's called When Stars Are Scattered. And it is the account of, um, of, uh, two refugee boys in Somalia um, who feel as though they're destined to live in a refugee camp, uh, for the rest of their lives. And the, um, exposure to differences, the exposure to what, um, kinds of situations, uh, are refugees that we, that we meet in, in our society actually go through has been, um, really in- incredible and, and, you know, obviously difficult to explore. But it's a graphic novel and it's really accessible to all levels of children. And so I just wanted to say, thank you for making the, you know, the curriculum reflect truly our, the school committee goals around, um, equity and inclusion. It's been a real special experience for my family. So thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Susie. Um, great comment. Other school committee comments? So I'll, I'll throw one out there, um, which is just a big shout out to Ellie Geddes. Uh, so some of you might have seen in the reminder that Ellie was recognized, chosen from the first congressional district uh, to represent the whole district for a, a lovely painting that she did, uh, of boats in Sweden. And it's going to hang in the Capitol for the entire year. So, uh, if anybody ends up down in DC, head to the Capitol so you can see Ellie's painting. Uh, it's a really wonderful testament to the great work that we do in the arts. Um, so, you know, huge recognition to our art teachers and to Ellie in particular. And if you don't know Ellie, she's a graduate, uh, from last year, from twenty twenty-one, and she's headed off to Syracuse. So best of luck to Ellie. All right. We are going to move on. So business with guests, uh, reopening of school discussion. So Marty, I'm going to let you take the lead on this one.
All right. Thank you. Um, so with us, we have, uh, two guests tonight, uh, one, a familiar face. Nick Dragantis is the director of facilities. And I think a new face to our meetings is our, is the town's public health director, uh, Finn McCool. So welcome to, to Finn and Nick. And Nick has, has been a partner for several years with us on, uh, ensuring facility readiness. And Finn is, uh, more recent, more recently joined, uh, the team. And, and, uh, he's been a great confidant and source of information for me uh, this summer as we have looked forward to the reopening of schools. And so, um, I want to sort of, before we begin, uh, echo Kevin's comments that I appreciate the, the passionate but, uh, respectful feedback that we received, uh, at the top of the meeting. And, and also appreciate the, the emails that we've received over the last few weeks. Uh, it's been helpful in terms of, of, uh, stretching our thinking and understanding, uh, some of the issues that are in front of us as we look forward to reopening our schools. So if I could, I'll just, uh, I have a, a brief slide deck that I hope will shape our conversation tonight. All right. And I'll say at the outset, um, that as, as I relayed in an email to, uh, parents and staff, uh, late last week, that a part of the intention tonight is to really frame some of the issues that, um, are in front of us as we look forward to reopening schools, that, that we are, uh, at a point where we are actively gathering input. We are actively asking important questions. Uh, we're actively trying to gather the information that we need to ensure that we can safely open our schools. Uh, I expect that, you know, at the conclusion of the meeting, the school committee will have some additional questions for us. Uh, they'll have some additional, um, information that they'll need to make an informed decision. Certainly, the, the, the topic of conversation in the public comment period, uh, related to masks. And I think that will, you know, kind of be the emphasis of our conversation tonight. But, um, I wanted to start by, by stepping back and taking a, a broader look at, uh, the reopening of Long Meadow Public Schools. And, and Finn and Nick are here to assist with that. You know, obviously, the, the, the priority for us is to ensure that we can provide, uh, five days of full in-person learning to all of our students and to do it safely. Uh, and if I could, I'll, I'll start with Finn. And I've got a couple of slides here that hopefully will allow Finn to give us a snapshot of, uh, where we are in terms of, uh, health and safety in Long Meadow and, and the wider region. I know Finn has been doing a lot of homework, uh, with, with his partners in other communities. And he's been, uh, locked into the discussions at the state and federal level. So, um, Finn, if I could, I'll, I'll just start with the information that you had provided to us relative to vaccinations and, and, uh, following that, we can, we can move towards, uh, taking a look at some of the case counts that, um, that, that you're gathering and, and accounting for right now. So.
Sure. Thanks, Marty. Um, so as you guys can see here, um, I think it's important to note these first two, um, sections here, ages twelve to fifteen years old, um, individuals with one dose per capita is up to eighty-five percent. Um, there's a lot of data, data showing that getting just one vaccine can be just as effective as getting both. And as you can see, for ages sixteen through nineteen, eighty-five percent, all the way up to the total of seventy-two percent. I think this is, this is a great start. Um, Massachusetts is one of the number one most vaccinated states in the country. Um, at, I believe sixty-five percent this week. And as you can see here in Long Meadow, we're up to seventy-two percent of our residents with at least one dose, uh, which I think is very promising. You know, when, when people are getting this vaccine, um, we are seeing that people that do end up still getting the virus, which were called breakthrough cases, um, have a lot less and more mild symptoms than someone that doesn't get the vaccine. So if we want to maybe, the next slide here, we can kind of get into some of the actual cases that are going on here in town. So as we see here, uh, last two weeks, this, um, uh, last two weeks, we've had about nineteen cases come through our town. So it is relatively higher right now. Out of the eleven hundred people that have been tested, nineteen of those have tested positive, bringing us up to a percent positivity of one point six six percent, which again is about, uh, double than the week before. So we are seeing a, a steady or slow, steady increase in case numbers. Uh, a lot of this is due to, um, the Delta variant and people who are unvaccinated. As you can see, Hampden County, uh, the rest of the county makes up another, uh, three hundred and sixty-some odd, uh, cases. So out of all of Hampden County, we're fairly low compared to all the surrounding towns especially. But again, I just want to reiterate, the case numbers are slowly going up. Um, and again, I just want to reiterate that that's due to a lot of, uh, of the Delta variant, the unvaccinated people and some of the breakthrough cases.
And could I just jump in?
Yeah.
And ask you, one of the things that we, I think I was curious about is where we stand relative to, to last year? Is there any way that you can put these numbers in context and compare them to, or?
Um, so, yeah, so we, it's really, uh, it's really difficult to compare us to any point of last year. Uh, mainly because now we do have the vaccine, um, and a lot of people are vaccinated. We're also dealing with variants, right? So, uh, we're seeing that this new Delta variant is much more transmissible. Um, in most cases, not all, but most cases, it's, um, uh, uh, people who get it have less, um, less of a hard time with it and symptoms aren't as bad. And we also, you know, didn't have as many people vaccinated, if any, at other points in the year, uh, when we've seen these types of numbers in our town. Um, again, some of these cases are breakthrough cases where people are still getting the virus, but their symptoms aren't nearly as bad. Uh, if we compared, um, hospitalizations, uh, to this case, the amount of, uh, positive, uh, numbers we've had, it's much, much lower than it has been before. So again, this, it's really, you can't really compare this to any other time. We're in a different time now, uh, mainly because of the vaccine and the new va, uh, variants that are coming up, that are more transmissible, but, uh, not as deadly.
So Finn, I think it might be, it's, um, the committee probably has some questions for you. And some may be able to answer tonight and some we may want to take back to the team. But, um, anything would be helpful, I'd say.
Thank you, Finn. Uh, questions from the committee. Bronwyn, go ahead.
Uh, hi Finn. Uh, just a quick question on the initial slide, Marty. Could you bring that up? Okay, so for the two different, um, columns, individuals with at least one dose per capita.
Yep.
So there's a difference between the one that's fully vaccinated. So for the people who got the Johnson and Johnson, which is just one dose.
Yep.
Do they fall into the at least one dose or fully vaccinated?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm, I'm pretty sure that they do fall into the fully, fully vaccinated individuals. Cause getting that one shot does count as being fully vaccinated. Um, so that, that should be recorded in that column.
So we do have a, uh, a decent amount of people that didn't go back for the second shot, maybe?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely a possibility. And again, I just want to reiterate, just getting the, the one shot is very effective in itself, which is very important. That we're at least getting people out there to get that one shot. Again, it's, it, it's more effective if you get both and we might see some more booster shots coming down the pipeline. But, um, I think it's really, um, great numbers that we have here for people that just have at least one shot.
Thank you.
Jamie.
Appreciate it. The, the same line of question, just so I understand numbers. Percentage is at the bottom. Do we have those with the actual, what the percentages are with the actual individuals? Right? Note right where you are. Um, that actually can get vaccinated? Cause obviously your totals here don't make any sense with all your, me. So how high are we with people who can actually get vaccinated?
Uh, yeah, that's a great question. So this number is, these numbers are provided, uh, to us by the state. Um, this is just a snapshot of much larger, more intensive, um, spreadsheet that they give to us. I can definitely look into that and, you know, get that information for you. Um, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Jamie, can I just ask a clarifying question? Are, are you asking like what percent of people are unable to get vaccinated because they're immunocompromised? Is that where you're going?
No. I, if, if you look at this, there's no way you could be at seventy-two percent in that first column with all the different age groups. It makes no sense.
So my, my understanding is that I think sometimes those totals take into account kids who can't. So, so that's, that's what you're getting at, is the total, the total number of people in town, not the number of people who are eligible to be vaccinated. That's what you're getting at. Okay.
Right.
So Finn, you're gonna, you're gonna get back to us on?
Yes, I can absolutely, I can get back to you on that for sure.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other questions for Finn? Gianna, please. Uh, can we try to get Gianna unmuted? Diane, perhaps that's something you can do?
She just did it. Great. Thanks, Kevin. Thank you, Finn, for being here for all your information. Forgive me if this is a kind of a simple question, but can people who have been vaccinated, either one-shot or, or fully, are they still able to? And I know you mentioned the, the breakthrough, but are they still able to carry any variant? And then transfer that to somebody else?
Uh, the short answer, yes, they are, they could still carry it. It's less likely, um, but it's, it's still a possibility. I don't know the exact, um, if there's an exact, you know, percentage of people who might still be carrying it, um, if they're fully vaccinated. I think it's case by case. But I have heard of people who are fully vaccinated still being able to carry the virus, um, for a certain period of time um, and, and give it to other people.
Thank you.
Yep.
Susie, go ahead.
I, I don't know, Finn. Thank you, first of all, for, for your, um, presentation and for stepping into this. Um, what I, what I want to know, and this might be, be beyond the scope of, of what you're working on. But I'm really curious as to what contact tracing protocols will look like. We've been notified by D E S I and the guidance that. Further information is coming about contact tracing. And I'm just wondering, what is, what if any distinction is there between contact tracing for unmasked? People, adults or children versus masked? And, and this is a practical matter, as you can imagine, that, you know, we would need to understand.
Right, I haven't, have not seen any more, you know, guidance on the contact tracing that's come out. As of recently, since the cases have gone down so much, you know, we, we, we don't have as many people working on the contact tracing. We're actually sending cases out to the C T C to do the contact tracing for us. They're noticing that there's been an uptick and realizing that they're understaffed as well, so they're wrapping up their, their staffing to help, help us with contact tracing. And fortunately, we are gonna be hiring, possibly hiring some more people to help us with contact tracing, but as for your question, if. If it's changed, there's nothing to say that's changed as of right now. I haven't seen anything. But if there is a change, I'll be sure to update everybody about it.
Yeah, and, and can you, for, I think for the benefit of everybody watching as well as the school committee members, can you, I, can you just verify for us? Who, who determines those, those contact tracing protocols for the state?
Um, I believe they're followed by the C D C and then from the Department of Public Health.
Thank you.
Yep.
I could jump in. I, I think you're asking a critical question, and I think the answer to that question. Will really inform the decision on masking. I had called a contact at D E S I today on, on that exact question. Because we haven't seen updated contact tracing protocol. We haven't seen updated quarantining protocols. And there is a, there is a webinar tomorrow that. We anticipate that some statewide diagnostic testing that will be sponsored. Will shape the quarantining requirements, but we'll talk about that a little bit later, but I, I really think that's a. That's an important unknown at this point. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
And as a follow-up to that, Marty, I, I read what you were talking about, which is the, you know, if, if. A school participates in the, in the testing, last year that was an opt-in. Would the testing be a mandate? Would it be, you know, it's because that's, that's all, if, if the testing's opt-in again. And a district, a district, hypothetical district, does not opt-in, then what does it look like? So I think we need to understand both scenarios.
And the webinar tomorrow, I think will answer that. I believe the answer to your question will be that it will be an opt-in situation, that it won't be compulsory for us to participate. But I think the, perhaps the incentive to participate will be higher this year. I, I'm hoping that we hear that the diagnostic testing is as rapid as they claim it. Will be, and I hope that we'll hear that it is as accurate as we want it to be. So I think, I know Finn will be on that call.
I just wanted to mention as well, you know, there's so many different licenses I'm trying to juggle. There was, there was one update about vaccinated contacts with people who are, who are, have the virus. Before the vaccines, you had to quarantine automatically for X amount of days and get tested after X amount of days. C D C just recommended to mess that if you are fully vaccinated and you have a known exposure to someone. Who has tested positive for COVID nineteen, you should be tested three to five days after that exposure and to wear a mask. In public indoor settings for fourteen days until you receive the negative result, so you're not actually quarantining, just by being a close contact. If you are fully vaccinated.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Bronwyn.
Finn, sorry to bombard you with questions on your, on your first night. We really appreciate your help. So right now, Long Meadow is not doing our own contact tracing. Like a, is like a, like a company doing it for us?
Correct, it's the Community Tracing Collaborative. So that, that, we send out the cases to them and they, they do the contact tracing for us. And like I mentioned, I don't want to speak too soon, but we're working on. Pulling together a team to help, you know, do the contact tracing a little bit more in-house. At least still, we can see, you know, a change in the right direction with the numbers.
Okay, so we're hoping to go back to how.
It was.
Did it last year or the town?
Yeah, yes.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Yep.
Suzie, please.
Thanks. And, and again, thank you Finn. Sorry. Your first night, first night. So I'm curious as to what the. The town is currently considering as far as the public entering town spaces that are indoors. Can you give any update on that?
Um, there's been no change as of right now. Again, we're monitoring the data closely. And I do have a board meeting next Monday where I'll be presenting the most recent data to the board. And see if they maybe have a recommendation on what they think we should do, but as of right now, nothing is changing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from the committee for Finn? So Finn, if you don't mind, I, I just have a couple for you. Which is, i- if I, if I heard you correctly, you said that the, the cases in Long Meadow doubled? From the past week to this week? Did I get that right?
So the data is showing that it's, yeah, the percent positivity basically doubled, not quite, but almost. But again, when you say double, when you go from, you know, nine to eighteen, it's, it's, you know, not a hundred to two hundred or higher. It's, it's still a fairly low in grand scheme of things, number of cases, but again, yeah, we are seeing an increase.
Sure, no, I, I, I get that and, and I think, you know, it's, it's important to recognize the spread between vaccinated people is not exponential. But the spread between unvaccinated people is exponential. So those numbers that double, the real interesting thing is going to be what are those numbers next week? And so I guess I'm, I'm hoping you can, you can let us know, I, I don't remember when these reports come out, how often they come out. Can you just remind us of, of the timing?
Yeah, usually they come out Thursday or Friday. So, you know, anytime, once I, once I, they're updated, I can recreate these charts and send them out to you if you'd like.
Yes, yes, we definitely would like.
Yeah, of course. Yes, I will do that. I'll, I'll recreate these with the most current data as soon as it's released and send them out.
Finn, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe at any moment you're able to, you understand how many active cases there are.
Yes, that's, yeah, we can understand how many active cases there currently are in town. It's hard because we're not doing everything in-house anymore, so I kind of have to wait for the C T C to be able to update me, which is, they can do, you know, every other day.
Other questions for Finn? All right, Marty, I think we can continue on.
I think Finn is going to stick around.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and.
I'll be around.
I anticipate that, you know, we'll pull together. Depending on what direction we get from the committee, what questions you have at the end of this meeting. I expect we'll pull together our team again early next week to sort of refine our understanding and get, get you. The information that you need to make an informed decision. So next up with us is, is Nick Gergantis, our, our facilities director. And I thought it would be helpful to, to have Nick bring us once again up to speed on the. Facilities related mitigation strategies that, that he's been working on. And the reason I think it makes sense at, at this meeting is because the, you know, the strength of. Those other mitigation strategies needs to be in place. And the strength and reliability and efficacy of those strategies will obviously inform. You know, the extent to which we need to have a, a mask requirement or mask policy in place. So Nick, again, thanks for all your work this summer. Thanks for the team's work. Wondering if you would be able to bring us up to speed on, on the preparations you're making on the facility side.
Sure thing. It's good to see everyone, albeit digitally. So we're gonna keep a lot of the strategies in place that we had for last year, starting with, you know, installing fresh H V A suit. Filters on all the units within the district, sticking with our increased filter change schedule. Which is now four times a year versus the pre-pandemic. Ensuring the function of the nearly two hundred bipolar ionization devices that were installed. On all the air handling units in the districts and all of the unit ventilators. Cleaning and redeploying all of the portable devices that we had for. Excuse me, for, for air cleaners that we had purchased, making sure that we get those back out into this, into the classrooms. Encouraging window use, making necessary repairs to windows where we can. And ensuring supply of box fans for classrooms to help with the air exchange. Adjusting your H V A C system so that they run on a twenty-four seven schedule during the school year, which just allows the buildings to breathe better. Making sure that our dampers are open a hundred percent when they can be. Obviously, winter time, we will have to adjust them back down so we don't freeze our units. And also cleaning and sanitization supplies. Right now, we do have a, a good stock and supply on hand. And making sure that we deploy all those, the necessary classrooms, storage closets and et cetera. Pretty much par for the course of what we had done last year.
So I, I'm happy to just jump in if nobody else wants to. Ni- Nick, I, I just want to, on behalf of the committee and the town, just thank you for all your hard work. I mean, I know. How much work you put in last year, you and your team, and, you know, the, Marty, am I right that we had no? Spread in schools last year? Am I right about that?
There's one case that was inconclusive, but, you know, certainly none that we could definitively point to as being the result of in-school spread.
And, and I mean, the reason I bring that up, Nick, is, is clearly the work that, that you did was part of, of that. And so continuing that great work this year just seems like an obvious thing that we can do. So again, just. You know, we, we have demonstrated the efficacy of the work that you're doing, so thank you for continuing to do it this year because it clearly is still needed. So thank you, Nick.
Of course, you're welcome.
And of course, Nick works closely with Tom Mazur, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, and, and Tom has been. Consulting with the custodial staff, consulting with the principals about everything that, that they need to get in place to make sure that we're ready to go. Even, even in a, a non-COVID year, summer's a busy time for maintenance crews and custodial crews, and, and they do a lot of work behind the scenes to get us. Up and running and get schools and classrooms and offices all set up. Hand hygiene, we expect the hand hygiene protocols to be in place. Distancing, you'll recall last year, distancing was, was very often. Our biggest challenge that, you know, requiring or maintaining a six foot or later, a three foot standard. As we head into this year, I want to assure the community that though we will distance where feasible. It will not create any basis for exclusion, or it would not be the reason to cause us to go remote. So we will distance as best we can, but it's, it's a feasible scenario as we head into this year. The quarantining protocols. I wish we had some clarity on this for you tonight. We simply don't. This is to be determined. The state D E S I has told us that. Some of the quarantining requirements will perhaps be related to a test and stay approach. In other words, if. We are able to get a diagnostic testing program off the ground, if we see it as reliable, if we see it. As efficacious, we would potentially put that diagnostic testing protocol in place. And potentially it would allow for students who have been identified as close contacts to regularly test and stay. So in other words, there's a positive case in a classroom, child gets designated as being a close contact. Those close contacts would, would, could go through that rapid diagnostic testing program. If they were negative, they would be able to return to class, probably masked, probably with notification to the community. We'll learn more tomorrow with this statewide webinar that we talked about earlier. But I do think it's a really important piece of the puzzle for us as we, as we try to, you know, make this picture work for us in the coming year. Diagnostic testing is, is not to be confused with the, with the pool testing. Pool testing is more of a surveillance testing, a screening testing, and I think we'll learn more about that tomorrow. I think our interest is more in the diagnostic testing, frankly, as a way to ensure that we can continue to keep our, our, our classrooms full and. Really, at the end of the day, it's really about keeping children and staff in school. So I, I, I hope to learn more about that and definitely will report back. To the committee about what we've heard, so we'll stop there.
Thank you, Marty. Bronwyn, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Marty. I was just wondering, are you involved in the process of? Us being able to get the testing back in-house, I mean, the contact tracing back in-house in Long Meadow? Because that was very, very successful last year, and I think that's extremely important. I think a lot of residents felt very confident in all the information that we were getting, and I'm, I'm sure this other program does a really good job as well. It's just that it went so well last year, so I was wondering how involved you are, or if there's anything we can do to try to make sure that happens.
I, I completely appreciate the question. I would agree that. I wouldn't want us to rely on the contact tracing collaborative if we, you know, as a last resort, we would, but. We had great results with doing the testing in our own community and the town, to its credit, prioritized. The contact tracing of school-aged children, so I always appreciated that. I was in contact with the town manager today, and, and as Finn kind of hinted, they're, they're working on a plan to try and. Expand capacity for us here in Long Meadow. If there are barriers there, I definitely would want to bring that back to this committee to see if you'd like to be involved in, in the solutions, if that's something that, that. You know, if that's an opinion that's widely held, I, I would like to make us, make sure that we have that capacity. In our own community, because I, I agree with you, it made a big difference for us last year.
Thank you.
Mary, go ahead.
I'm thinking about our various safe mitigation strategies and how one impacts another. So what I'm hearing is that we'll try to do social distancing as us, when given the space so that we are not. So if we're not able to take the distance we approve, but taking our mask, like what is the relationship between masks and social distancing? So if we're unable to take the distance, is there, is it problematic to take the mask? All of these strategies together.
So I don't know if Finn caught that, but I'll, I'll take a shot at it, and Finn, if you, if you're still with us, you can jump in. I'd say. You're right, all of these strategies go hand in hand, and if we feel that there's, you know. That the, the layered strategies are work, are weak in one area or aren't effective in one area, then we might have to beef it up. In another area. So I, I do agree with you that, you know, if, if, for example. If the committee were to not require a. Masking at a particular level, let's say, then we might need to be more committed to distancing. Conversely, if the committee, if it were the opposite, then, then distancing would be. You know, I suppose less, less of a factor for us. So I, I do think they, they go hand in hand. And if, you know, if, if, for example, if our, if the, if our, if Nick reported to us that he was having some. Ventilation challenges at a particular school, then the question would be, okay, what other mitigation strategy can we beef up to offset? The problem that we might be experiencing with, with ventilation. So these are hypothetical. So these are hypotheticals I'm using here, but I think you make a great point that all of these things are completely interrelated. And if, you know, if our cleaning and disinfection protocols aren't up to snuff, then we, obviously they need to be, but we would want to offset that with some of the other strategies. So, you know, I posed that question to our contact at DSE, who's a, you know, senior advisor to the commissioner. I actually asked that question today and she really put the focus on making sure that distancing was not a barrier to opening schools five days a week. She couldn't emphasize that enough. She did say distance where feasible, but that we don't want to report to this community that distancing is creating, you know, challenges for us to get our kids in five days a week, full-time.
Finn, was there anything you wanted to add to that? I'll take that as a no. Other questions at this point for Marty? Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. Superintendent, thanks for this update and for all the information. I know we're still needing more information about quarantining and contact tracing and those protocols. I'm just wondering, can you share a little bit about what your thoughts might be when we do have that information or even right now in terms of how the quarantining and the contact tracing, how that impacts attendance? And, you know, if we'd have like, you know, 80 kids out because they're quarantining and staff? And remember, that was, you know, a consideration last year. So I just would love to hear about that again.
What we learned last year is the importance of being sort of precise with our approaches to contact tracing. So that if there were a positive case in a school, I think early on, back in the fall of 20, we might have been inclined to move remote, you know, for an entire school. As the year went on, we learned that we could be more precise in identifying positive cases, isolating close contacts. And then over time, the amount of quarantining time that was required changed as well. So, you know, we don't want to be, we don't want to be, you know, sort of overly cautious, frankly, when we identify close contacts. We want to be precise. We want to, you know, we want to exercise an appropriate amount of caution and not over-identify close contacts because when children are out of school, obviously it's not good for learning, but it's a strain on families. And we heard that over and over last year, just how difficult it was for families when their children were caught up in that close contact net. And so I'm hoping that the quarantining protocols allow us to exercise that precision. I'm hoping that the diagnostic testing will in fact allow us to exercise that test-and-stay approach. But, you know, the efficacy, the usefulness, the practicality of the diagnostic testing, I'll rely on folks like Finn, our district physicians, our nurse leader. Those are the folks who know a lot more about COVID testing than I do. But, you know, we'll need to understand the medical efficacy of it, but also the practical application of it and how quickly it will potentially allow us to get kids back to the classroom.
Thank you.
So the last bullet on this page relates to masking. And obviously, this is a topic that is on everyone's mind. And it's an important mitigation strategy that is the focus of our meeting largely tonight. So I would start with the reminder that school committees in fact have the authority to adopt mask policies unless there's a determination or a regulation made by a local board of health. It is the purview of the school committee. Back in August of 20, the school committee did in fact adopt a mask policy. Local conditions allowed us to suspend that mask policy back in June of 21. And so currently, that's where things stand. I would remind anyone watching that absent any policy, individuals always may elect to wear a mask. So that's always an option that's available to staff or students if the committee decided that it did not want to adopt a mask requirement of some sort. Currently, there is no federal or state mandate regarding masking. And the next couple of bullets just sort of block. This is really making the benefit of folks at home that might be watching because I know the committee is very much tuned into the guidance and advice that we're receiving. But back in June, MassDSE had issued a notice that all the health and safety guidance, including masking, that they had lifted that. They were quick to qualify that though by saying that they would continue to review health information and that they would make revisions as necessary. The news is that I think that DSE and MassDPH are working closely together. It's encouraging that the commissioner of both of those agencies are issuing joint statements for us. Earlier in July, CDC had issued some school guidance recommending the masking of all individuals who are not fully vaccinated. And again, that was something that was subsequently replaced by some guidance I'll talk about shortly. In that, as early as July 2021, July 9, 2021, the CDC had proposed a rationale for universal masking. They did say back in the night that communities, school committees, school boards could consider a universal requirement if, in fact, you know, based on these factors, based on the fact that most students from kindergarten through sixth grade, students are not yet eligible for vaccination. They encourage communities to look at transmission rates. They encourage communities to look at the level of the variants. They encourage communities to think about any monitoring or enforcement challenges that are unique to individual communities. They encourage communities to look at vaccination rates. And they encourage communities to gather community input, which I know was part of our discussion earlier tonight. Again, this committee is aware, but just make sure we just have a baseline understanding of the guidance that's out there. The American Academy of Pediatrics did issue a notice that recommended that all students older than age two and all school staff mask, regardless of vaccination status. Not too long after that, the CDC issued some new school guidance on the 27th, recommending that even fully vaccinated individuals, that they mask indoors. And then for K-12 guidance, they indicated that universal indoor masking for all staff and students was recommended. And then a few days later, we heard from MassDPH and MassDSE. And as our public commentators pointed out earlier, MassDPH, MassDSE had come out with a strong recommendation that students kindergarten through sixth grade wear masks indoors, except while eating. Masks outdoors would not be necessary by that recommendation. They further strongly recommended that unvaccinated staff in all grades and students grade seven and above wear masks while indoors. And went on to say that they recommended that schools allow vaccinated students to remain unmasked. I think it is important to note that as we talked to DSE officials about this and as, you know, the webinars that we participated in, you know, some high-ranking DSE officials have indicated that even this guidance is subject to ongoing review. I think, you know, this is hardly a settled matter at DSE. And so I think that's something that if the committee meets again or has a future meeting to decide this, that, you know, perhaps we'll have a better idea whether or not this guidance has in fact settled in. But it appears that it's still under review at the state level. I should note that one of the non-negotiables is that staff and students would be required to wear masks on school buses and while in health offices. That's been unequivocal and clearly stated by MassDPH and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So I'll spend a few moments sort of framing the mask question. As I talked to some individual committee members over the last couple of weeks, I think we all agreed that the primary focus is to ensure in-person learning. And schools work best, it's not rocket science, schools work best when kids are in school and staff are in school. And that's always been our goal, is to keep kids safe while they're in school. And we know that there's a strong link between good attendance in school, in person, and school achievement. I think as a community, I hope we all continue, regardless of what side of the issue we're on, I hope we all continue to acknowledge that there is no perfect solution and that whatever is decided, we'll have to consider ways to mitigate against the adverse effects of whatever approach is adopted. And we've already begun conversations with the principals on, you know, the what-if scenarios. What if we have a universal masking requirement? What if it's a strongly recommended scenario? So they're already actively planning that. They're already thinking it through, thinking about the practical logistical ramifications of that, but also the social, emotional, academic ramifications of that as well. And then I think part of our success last year was relied on the fact that we were always willing to revisit our decisions. And I know this committee was adamant that, you know, we can't rest on our laurels and we need to be willing to continually to review decisions that we make based on evolving conditions, based on the latest public health information that crosses our desks. So those are three, for me anyways, those are three things that I think we, you know, need to make sure are part of the discussion. And I think if we acknowledge these three things, I think it will perhaps, you know, dampen some of the emotion that surrounds this really important issue. So there are, we've received an advisory from the Mass Association of School Superintendents. And I really liked the way they framed the potential pathways in front of us. And essentially, school committees right now across probably the country are wrestling with this. And there's a few different pathways that you could go, at least here in Massachusetts, and that is a universal requirement. There are committees, school administrations, that are thinking about differentiated policies based on the grade level or the age of students, based on vaccination status, based on whether one's an employee or whether one is a student. And then finally, the third general pathway that we could go down is really to keep masking optional and keep it based on the recommendations that we receive from CDC and from Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So some factors to consider, these are things that we've already talked about. I won't linger on this slide, but obviously, you know, focusing on the vaccination rates, the prevalence of the variants, the evidence of school transmission, the efficacy of all of our other mitigation strategies. But these are maybe some of the issues that haven't quite surfaced yet tonight. As we think about this, and I expect that at some point, you'll ask us administratively for a recommendation and we'd be eager to bring you a recommendation. But these are some of the things that are on my mind is sort of, you know, what was our experience with masking last year? Now, people have different answers to that question. But I think that needs to be a factor in whatever decision we arrive at. We need to understand that in the coming year, there will not be a remote learning option. You'll recall this time last year, we were surveying families, asking them of their intentions, whether or not they wanted to have the children be in person or remote. That won't be an option for the coming year. Obviously, we will maintain our longstanding commitment to educate children who are medically homebound or hospitalized, you know, where there is a physician who affirms the necessity of that. But, you know, we will, there'll be no sort of hybrid learning. There'll be no Zoom and Rome in the way that we imagined it last year. Having said all that, I think we did learn a lot about how to serve students who have to be remote for one reason or another. We learned a lot as a school community, but it will be a very different arrangement this year. Finn mentioned earlier that the Long Meadow Board of Health is meeting on the 16th. I think whatever comes out of that meeting, we'll want to make sure that that's information that makes it to this committee. The town is in the midst of hiring a public health nurse. And as Brownwood pointed out earlier, having some local capacity for contact tracing is really key. And I'm sure the town understood how that was beneficial to us last year. And I know they're actively seeking some solutions. For this year, quarantining, we've talked about that already. You know, how will the duration of the quarantine requirement, how will it be influenced by masking? Will there be different lengths of quarantining required for staff or students who are masked versus unmasked? What will the access to the diagnostic testing be like? How quickly can we get that up and running if we choose to do that? And, you know, how practically effective is it as a solution, as a mitigation strategy for us? And then, as we mentioned earlier, the surveillance testing and the diagnosing testing webinar tomorrow. Our administrators have been talking a lot about enforcement and monitoring. Frankly, I think there's some monitoring issues that will be in front of us regardless of what decision we make on masking. Obviously, if there's a requirement, we'll need to enforce and monitor. But even if there's not, even if it's a sort of an optional thing or a strong recommendation, you know, there will be families that will be sending their children to Long Meadow Public Schools, hoping and expecting that their children are either masked or unmasked. And, you know, what is our role in kind of monitoring family wishes? And, you know, and making sure that families' intentions are upheld in our classrooms? So that's something that's on our minds as well. Privacy and medical records, you know, we've been getting some regular advice from our attorneys about whether or not we can request vaccination records from staff. And the current advice is that if there is a masking requirement and if the committee wanted a differentiated approach, the best practice advice that we're getting legally would be to have a mandate, but allow individuals to be exempted from that mandate by producing a vaccination record. Again, that's if the committee chose sort of a differentiated solution where, you know, which would allow for exemptions based on vaccination status. But these are all sort of just things that are under consideration right now. This is a very, I know, it seems that it's one of these issues that is simplified in the media. I think it's, there's a lot of complexity to it and we need to be very thoughtful about how we administer whatever decision we ultimately make on this really, really important issue. And there perhaps, depending again on what decision is made, there might be some collective bargaining obligations that we would have to fulfill as well. So go back to where we started on this, the three potential pathways. I hope we've given you some important information. I hope we framed the issue for you. We're definitely eager to go back and do some additional homework based on whatever questions you have or based on whatever information you want us to chase down. But I appreciate the way the committee has approached this and your openness to input from the community. And I know you've all been doing a lot of homework on all the guidance that has been in your meeting packets. So I appreciate you all keeping up to speed on that. So I'll stop there and I can stop the screen share if it would be helpful or keep it up if you want.
I'm fine with the screen share. Suzy, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, Dr. O'Shea. I know this is a lot to handle. I know in June, everybody felt a sense of absolute euphoria, that things were turning a corner. We, I've spoken with hundreds of school leaders across the country and especially the conversations have gone from June to that euphoric feeling now to I can't get them because they're in meetings about COVID protocols. So it's definitely swung in a different direction. And I just, I think it's important to acknowledge our administration. and all that they're having to deal with, knowing that we were hoping to go into a school year with, with a sense of freedom from this disease, with a sense of, you know, let's, 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 let's leave that behind us, but we're not. And so I appreciate how attentive you've been to the situation and the fact that you're trying to do it as we reinstitute, but also reimagine learning and teaching in the classroom. So thank you.
Thank you, Suzy. Jamie, go ahead.
I completely agree with what Suzy said. You guys are fantastic and amazing and we appreciate it all. The one clarification, Marty, if you could just go to the slide up, because I was confused, I'm assuming others are. So the second point, which is wonderful, no options. So people don't have the option to go online, but we will be prepared. If you want, the only reason why I'm asking is I have kids in Williams Middle School in February of 2020. I think there were eighty, ninety kids out of school at that point in time. I think we would want to be prepared. This year, where there were ninety kids, I'm assuming the entire school would be quarantined, that we would be learning online as opposed to going two weeks without any learning.
Yeah, I appreciate the chance to clarify. I'd say everything we went through last year has prepared us for that. The, the work we did around standardizing Google Classroom, the work that our teachers did, learning all the technical skills that they, they needed to provide a remote experience for kids. I would say that, you know, this time last year, we were planning schedules that would allow us to pivot to a fully remote arrangement. Those schedules were, were appropriate for the time, but they weren't, you know, really advantageous. They weren't the schedules that we wanted for kids. I'll say that as we plan for this year, we're planning for full in-person learning, five days a week. I think, and we could make that switch to remote learning if this ever got to a boiling point. I don't think it would look like last year. I don't think there would be the, the remote Wednesdays, for example. I don't see that. But again, you know, I don't think any of us have a perfect crystal ball on this. So I'm giving you my, my best understanding of, of how we might respond if it does get, if it does reach a boiling point with the flu or the virus or with variants. So I think we, based on everything we, we learned last year, we've got the capacity to switch the one-to-one arrangement that, that we put in place for kids. Every kid will continue to have a Chromebook. And Nick George, our tech director, is refreshing the fleet. So we'll be ready to go that way as well. But it won't be an optional thing that one can just, a family could just pick. I hope that answers your question.
Gianna, go ahead.
Thanks for that Superintendent. I am, so I hear you on the kind of, you know, Jamie's question, talking about a larger, you know, number of students. But I was actually thinking, what happens with, you know, the one student that has to quarantine? Or maybe they went on vacation and when they come back? Like, I know again, that we're still waiting to hear about what the quarantining, you know, protocols are going to be for Long Meadow. But in the case that there is, you know, one student or maybe two students, you know, like, are we prepared to, you know, are they going to join from home on their computer? Are we going to give them, you know, a tutoring option, you know? How's that going to work?
I don't anticipate that they would be zooming into classrooms based on, you know, based on the conditions that we're seeing right now and the, and the DESI requirements that are in front of us right now. Now, again, if this, if this reached another level and, and we were dealing with large numbers of students who are quarantining for extended periods of time, we might have to rethink that. But my hope is that there'll be far fewer students quarantining, that we will be precise in identifying close contacts. And my hope is that we will be able to keep kids in school and so that we won't be faced with the challenge that you're describing. If there are students who are, who are home for short periods of time, again, I, I think the, the good thing is that our lesson deliveries have been standardized via Google Classroom or Seesaw. Kids have access to technology with their Chromebooks. So I think they'll be able to access the lessons on a, on a more seamless basis. If it, if it becomes more of a challenge for us, you said something, could we, could we have tutors? Could we have individuals who are doing that monitoring, those check-ins that kids might need? That's something that we could continue to talk about.
Thank you, Yan. I guess I was thinking more about, you know, I, I hear you on the Google and the lessons and, and, you know, even if they were videotaped and available, I'm not sure if that's the case. But the instructional piece, you know, a kid who has to be out for ten days or whatever isn't going to be able to teach themselves, you know, the math lesson. They're not going to be able to just go on the Google document and figure it out. So I, you know, I'm just offering up as, you know, for me, you know, I just really want it to be a consideration in terms of what kind of, you know, like in Springfield, you know, we know if a kid is going to be out for, you know, fourteen days consecutive, we make sure that there's tutoring, you know. So even if there's packets, like I get all that stuff, I just want to, you know, make sure that if there are kids, again, you know, we'll have students that might not be the contact in school, but a contact, you know, parents and guardians are working all over the place. So they could be quarantining for reasons outside of what happens in, in the school buildings. So I just want to make sure that that's a consideration, that they have access to the instructional side of, of, you know, the curriculum.
And it's so important to draw a distinction between those students who might be at home because they're identified as a close contact versus those students who are, who are medically homebound and have some ongoing or periodic challenges. And those are the students that I think we've always made a commitment to and, and worked with healthcare providers and worked with families to make sure that we're continuing their education. So I, I think I wouldn't, I want to make sure that, that we're, we're making that distinction and, and we want to assure families that are watching that we're, you know, we're continuing to be committed to the, to families that are, you know, where children are facing some ongoing health challenges. So, and so I don't know if there's anything that, that I'm missing there that, that you might want to add in.
There we go. I haven't been on this line. I forget how to unmute myself. Yeah, if someone's out ten days, under any circumstances, we always kick in some services to make sure that they're okay. So we'll be keeping a close eye on that, Jana. And hopefully, if we get some on-the-spot testing or that we won't have those long periods of time of kids in quarantine, it'll be two or three days or it could be, you know, a couple hours and they'll be back in full as long as they, I think so. Here's to hoping.
Thank you. And when you said the word services, it also makes me think of like, you know, speech, OT, you know, the other non-instructional or, you know, those services as well. Thank you.
Other questions? Mary, go ahead.
I spend a lot of time thinking about school leadership teams. And Marty, you mentioned this, that our current leadership teams are thinking a lot about the limits. And what if we do this, what if we do this? And schools will be starting soon and these decisions have to be made in real time. And so I just want to acknowledge that added pressure of having a plan A and a plan B. And to thank everyone for your patience as we continue to look at emerging variants and try to make these decisions in real time with the best data that is the most recent. I'm thinking, putting an educator cap on, thinking a little bit about some of the things that schools and supervisors must be thinking about is space within their building, how kids will move throughout the building. And for example, we do establish something with a differentiated masking policy. Marty, you had mentioned if the parent sends a child to school with a mask, they will expect that the child will wear that mask all day. And how do you monitor that, especially when a teacher might have over a hundred students in school day? Parents may change their preference. How will that communication be streamlined? And so I'm just interested to see on a school level, how all
Thanks, Mary. Other comments or questions? Suzy?
Last one. And, and I thank you for articulating that because I think that's so critical to understand and Marty alluded to it before. And I don't know, and, and I don't want to add more work, believe me, to your team. So, but from a practical standpoint, would it be helpful for them to share some of those what-ifs? And what they've sort of come up with in their minds is how they, you know, manage those what-ifs with the, with the school committee? So that everyone understands the impact of either or of the three decisions that are, those pathways that are in front of us currently?
If, if you have some of those what-if scenarios tonight, happy to listen. Likely won't have answers for you. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be wise to try to make that up on the spot. But I'd like to, you know, if, if there are questions you have that you'd like us to bring back to the team so that you understand how this will play out operationally or educationally or in terms of, you know, children's social, emotional needs. Yeah, we're all ears. We, we're, we're happy to, you know, take some notes and bring that back. So you can, again, make that, make that informed decision on a really tricky issue, right?
And then I'm also wondering about other safety requests. If we are allowing families to provide input about masking, are we also allowing them to say, I feel comfortable or uncomfortable if I'm seated near? Or as a teacher who is wearing a mask around? Those are many questions that parents have. Alternatively, if we had a universal masking policy, I think that what I'm hearing from many families is concerns about SEL. And I'm thinking about opportunities that we already provide for kids to unmask and increase those for students who struggle and for families who feel very strongly that masking is not a good thing for their child. I think about small group instruction, where we have kids seated in this proximity around the table or at centers. And how do we figure out which kid, which kid, if we are monitoring, help with the typical classroom? And the other thing I was thinking about, if we did have students who struggle with masking, are those additional help for taking them outside? And we hold them outside, so those are some things to cover, which might add on to what you're doing with this group. These are the things I'm thinking about, like what will we look for?
Thank you, Mary. Other comments or questions? Brownwood, please.
Thanks. I just wanted to go back to what Gianna mentioned and that, I mean, that's a definite concern. But hopefully this will alleviate that, at least for a lot of the seven through twelve students. And I think Finn alluded to this. The CDC, in the CDC packet for the guidance, it does say that fully vaccinated, close contacts should be referred for testing. If they're asymptomatic, fully vaccinated, close contacts do not need to quarantine at home following, following an exposure. They can continue to attend school in-person and participate in other activities. In addition to correctly wearing masks in school, they should also wear masks in other indoor, public settings for fourteen days or until they receive a negative test result. So with the numbers of, the percentage of students vaccinated, and if this is what is going to be the, the final word, which of course, we, we know that it can change, that makes me feel like there won't be a ton of students that will be in that situation. And as Sue mentioned, if there are some, you know, they, they take care of anyone out ten days or more. I know that doesn't solve the K to six situation, but at least, you know, for seven through twelve, it does alleviate a little bit of the, of the worry, especially with the high school where they have like seven different classes and different teachers and all that. So I just wanted to let people know in case they didn't get to that, because there's a lot of information that we got. And I'm hoping that this remains the same, but I'm sure you'll let us know if it changes. Thanks.
Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. Superintendent, I, I was wondering about, and I know that I mentioned this to you, do we, or can we get more information or do we know right now about how the testing would be administered in the school? I know I mentioned to you that my school was part of, you know, like, we would have that, you know, piloting of, of the testing. And I did the test, my, you know, with the nurse, I did the test to myself. I don't really trust myself to be doing it appropriately or accurately. But, you know, so do we have any idea of how the testing would be administered? And I'm at an elementary school and so the kids were doing, you know, so any more information on that would be appreciated as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely bring you back some info on what potential testing tools would look like. The, I think what you're describing is the surveillance testing, the pool testing, where there are models where the students would self-swab. I think the, I think what we're really interested in finding out more about too is the, the diagnostic testing, which I expect would be administered by school health professionals, by our nurses. I, I don't think the diagnostic testing would be, would be done, would be self-administered. But TBD, so we'll, we'll, we'll learn more. I think they are, I think they, they, they're promising some new, robust, swift approaches to it that the state will support and provide the funding for.
Thank you, Superintendent. And then, and to that, yeah, and thanks for clarifying. I forgot it was called pool testing and that, yeah, it was different than the diagnostic. So thank you for clarifying that.
From an administrative operations perspective, would there be a requirement, and this is something you may not, may know or may not know, to get parent approval for any sort of testing protocol?
Great question. I would expect that would be the case. So that's a, we'll add that to the list and make sure we report back to you on that.
And if that could be done sort of as a, you, by, you know, signing this form, you submit to, you know, the possibility of your child being tested throughout the year, instead of it being each time your child has to be tested, just for a practical, just, I'm thinking from the administrator side of things and the practical.
Opt-in or opt-out scenario. Yep, yep.
Other comments or questions? So I'm gonna call on myself. So Marty, a couple of things. I mean, one, I think it's really interesting that we're having this discussion in the midst of mask mandates popping up all over the place, right? In local towns, um, you know, if you look to our local colleges, they have vaccine mandates and mask mandates. So it's just interesting to keep in mind what our surrounding businesses, governments, colleges are doing. Because every day I feel like there are more mask mandates, which obviously we can't ignore. One, I had a couple of questions, Marty. So let me go with the first one, and maybe this goes adds on to your list. If I remember correctly, last year when we were, when we had full distancing, we had to take over spaces that weren't traditionally classrooms and use those as classrooms so that we kept distancing. So one implication I would like to understand is if we didn't have a universal mask policy, would that mean that some of those bigger spaces like libraries and music rooms and art rooms then had to become classrooms again, and then we would lose our ability for some of those specials to happen? Because I I think that was one of the things that happened last year. And again, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that seems to be an important implication of the masking decision. So that was my first question. So I'm I'm happy to stop.
The the way you described last year was spot on, that 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 did in fact happen. I expect this year that we would not want to put distancing requirements in place that were as disruptive as last year. I wouldn't, I don't think, you know, we will maintain distance where we can when it's feasible, but I don't expect that it would be sort of, you know, upending music rooms. Lunch is still something that we're trying to understand. That's that's another problem. We should have been a bullet on the deck here. Um, that's a bit of an unknown. Mr. Maz is working on that, trying to understand what's happening there. But I don't expect that whatever your decision on masking, it 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 might influence the the types of distancing that are happening in classrooms and 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 might might affect group work or how desks are distributed in a classroom. But I don't think it would completely affect the entire footprint of the building in the way it did last year, if that answers your question. Is that fair, what you say? I'm looking to, yeah.
Thank you. Um, and then my 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 second question is, we haven't really heard anything from the faculty and staff perspective tonight. So I I wonder if you could weigh, if if possible, weigh in on that. I I didn't see Kathy Rosato on the call. I I I just would love to get something, if not tonight, then at a subsequent meeting, what what the faculty and staff are thinking about the the masking issue.
So I I I would be reluctant to speak for them, but I think it's a great question. And I think I I expect they would want their perspective heard by the committee. And and I'm sure they'll appreciate the your your interest in getting some input from them. I know that Kathy was was traveling this evening and and was unable to be with us. Rob O'Connell is was on the call earlier. Rob is the in the coming year, the co vice president of, Rob is here, he's the co vice president of the LEA. Uh, and I don't know if Rob, if it's appropriate, if you if you're interested in hearing from Rob uh, or if Rob is only here just to listen and and learn tonight. I know he is on the call.
And I would say to Rob, no pressure at all, but the, you know, the opportunity is here. We would love to hear from you if you want to say something. And again, no pressure.
So the the only thing I would say on on behalf of the LEA is we we are exploring this. We were listening in the in tonight's meeting and what's being said here, and then we will act based on that.
Great. And and yeah, any input you want to provide to us would be welcome. So thank you, Rob. Uh, other comments or questions before we move on on the agenda? All right. Marty and and everybody else, uh, thank you for the input. I think we have a lot to think about.
And yeah, so we have some homework to do. We'll gather some additional info and and hopefully bring back a recommendation for you. Understand that this is an incredibly complex topic. If you have any additional questions uh, over the course of the week, let us know. We're happy to do our best to answer those.
And Marty, I guess the the final thing I have is, um, I know we've talked about adding another meeting. When is the appropriate time in the agenda to to figure that out? Is that, oh, okay. All right. Thank you. It helps if I scroll down. Thank you, Susie. So that will be upcoming. Awesome. Okay, so I think we're ready to move on uh, to administrative reports. So we're back to Marty.
Uh, thanks. I think you've heard enough from me. Um, and you know what's on our minds. Um, I I'm worried that the two assistant superintendents are nodding their heads up and down when I said you've heard enough from me. So I will say though, you know, as an administrative team, our 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 hearts are in some uh, in some important places over the last couple of weeks. Long Meadow High, um, lost a rising senior, Jacob Roz. He he was a spirited young man who was very active in in so many extracurriculars and the child of of a few of our educators here at Long Meadow. And we're all saddened and appreciate the outreach that the committee did to to the family. But but a very, very sad moment uh, for the Long Meadow Public School community. And then additionally, um, we're we're all, our hearts are also with Timmy Allen, Principal of Brooklyn Park Elementary School, and husband of Nicole Allen, Principal of Glenbrook. Timmy is, as as I think everybody knows at this point, recovering from a very serious uh, heart attack and and our our thoughts and prayers go out to the Allen family. They they've extended so much love and support to so many people over so many years. And uh, we hope it's it's making its way back to them uh, as Timmy recovers out in Boston. So appreciate the chance just to acknowledge those those two important things that are on our mind.
And and I I think it would be appropriate at this time just to to take a a moment of silence uh, in in Jake's honor. So let's take a moment of silence. Thank you, Marty. All right, moving on. Uh, Sue, I think that you are up.
I already got to keep it short from time. And I'm not going to talk about anything COVID related either. Um, I think some happy stuff to report on all this, to be brief, are Summer Academic Academy started this week. And um, this morning I opened the doors to, I stopped counting at 100 kids. So right, a lot, a lot of happy kids, several happier parents to be dropping them off, I think, for the couple of hours. Uh, it's really kind of fun because we have some high school educators who are working with elementary students. And they the elementary students are thrilled to have them in front of them. So that that's been going really well. So hopefully we keep that up for the rest of the week. Next week we have math starting just for two hours a day, just to get our, you know, feet in the pool before school starts again. Uh, again, um, probably over 200 seats between ELA and math, some of the same kids in both. And um, having a good time, or at least it looks that way to me. This is also the last week of Special Education Summer School. I'll just put in a plug for that. They've been working all summer very hard with a lot of their Special Education students. Gianna, I know you mentioned that earlier, um, kind of giving just a lot of additional services to make up for last time for last year. I'm really proud of John Wells. He is the teacher who stepped in to help with summer school. He has gotten a taste of what uh, being an administrator in school is. And I think he's doing okay, still upright anyway. So that's good. And Mike Evans, the same for summer schools, for Special Education. Um, but I think they had a a pretty big eye opening experience about all of the things that happened there. Along those lines, we have our mentoring and induction program ready to roll for our new educators. Uh, we have about 13 ready uh, to go with that. I guess I should stop to say, I was gonna try to keep it all positive, but this has been the most difficult year for hiring staff that that we have ever experienced, I'm I'm sure. Um, we have several teachers on emergency licenses who are great teachers, but haven't not gone through a, you know, a program. And and so, um, it's been a real worry. And uh, in in fact, the middle school really could not find a STEAM teacher at Williams. And um, the great sixth grade team there kind of put their heads together and determined that if they could get a writing teacher to support the writing, which would be an area of weakness coming out of last year, that they would all together develop some STEAM units along with um, Glenbrook to infuse those into the the curriculum. So uh, that's how they're planning to manage STEAM at Williams. Um, next year they would have loved to find a great STEAM teacher and, you know, have that as part of their core, but just couldn't do it. Along those lines, we, you know, we are struggling to find math coaches, just can't do that either. Uh, we have an awesome in-house candidate, but it felt like we really needed to have a coach in every building to make the the leap worthwhile. So I think our plan right now, Marty, right, is to hold off for a year and start advertising kind of after the holidays for some math coaches for elementary. Uh, the other area of challenge is French at middle school and not for French and one one section of Spanish, too, I think we need. Um, we had maybe a little breakthrough today and even got a chance to talk to you about that, Marty. But um, we're still looking for someone, you know, qualified to teach French in seventh, eighth grade at middle school. So uh, we have a fifth grade open position. I think we have a first grade open position still. So we're seeking good teachers. Our our title grant came in last week. I can let you read that. You don't need to have me talk anymore about that. We'll bring them to you to accept at some point in the really near future. Because I know we have salaries coming out of the S uh, the years two and three. So that would be that. I'm not sure if I've, uh, PD for the start of the school year is really focused about our own team building. We haven't been together as a group in a long, long time, even at the end of last year. Faculty meetings were happening kind of virtually. So uh, our principals have some really nice things planned for their staff, some team building stuff. Springfield College is coming in for Williams, and we're trying to see if we can grab them for Glenbrook, too, to do a team building activity with them one afternoon. All of our supplies are coming through our doors, our materials. It's really fun to watch. We got a couple of drones to play with those and see if we could look at that for some kind of coding stuff next year. So I will leave it at that and if anything, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Uh, Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question on the STEAM at Williams. Are we saying we're not doing STEAM there or is it going to be the same as last year?
It's hopefully it's a little more robust than last year. I think COVID got in the way last year. But yeah, it's going to be an integrated experience.
Is there any way we can utilize the resources at Glenbrook? Is it, it's a, yeah, we just with regards to hiring, it's a very different experience between Glenbrook and Williams. I mean, it's it's has nothing to do with anything anybody's doing in here. It's just the staff is very, very different. So we think we can rotate. I know it was a very
Yeah, I think we're, we're, this is sort of, you know, within the last couple of weeks that we were working on identifying a qualified teacher for that sixth grade STEAM experience. We do think that the, we could do some pollination that the Glenbrook teacher, we teach STEAM can make himself available to the team at at Williams. And that is a commitment by the the sixth grade team to, again, sort of make it an integrated experience where some of the the units of study that that the Glenbrook STEAM teacher has developed over the last few years can be adapted to that team approach at Williams. So if there's more you can add to that, Sue.
Yeah, Tom Burnett over at Glenbrook, uh, we looked at the schedule to see if it was possible to share STEAM teacher. It just doesn't fit within their schedule, unfortunately. But he has already ordered supplies and materials for units that Williams will be doing and um, has plans to to help them out as much as possible there.
So are we still have four days at Glenbrook and two days at Williams first STEAM? Is this where last year or will we kind of reconcile that too?
I think they're going to develop units, so several units throughout the year. Unnecessarily four days, two days, five days. It could be, you know, it could be a four week unit. It can be a two week unit, but.
Gianna.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, Sue, I would just want to offer that um, it might be an opportunity for partnering with with STCC. They have an amazing STEAM program and professors and and students. And um, you know, even even a visiting professor concept where, you know, the STEAM professors from STIC come over and, you know, maybe support, you know, in in the classroom when that STEAM lesson is occurring. They also have students who could maybe come over and be a guest, you know, guest speaker, so to speak, but, you know, who's familiar with the kind of stuff that they would be doing. You know, to to kind of beef up a little bit, you know, until a a teacher can be found. But um, I do know that they have a, they have a great program.
Um, Tom Burnett belongs to the Pioneer Valley STEM and STCC is a part of that consortium. So he's got a lot of good good help there.
Bronwyn.
Thank you. I remember last year around this time, I, or maybe it was a little earlier in the summer, I was already a little bit concerned that the students at Williams were getting half as much uh, STEAM time as the students at Glenbrook. And now it sounds like they're going to be even at more of a disadvantage. Because Mr. Burnett at Glenbrook is amazing and doing four full days a week with the sixth graders. And it sounds like he's going to share his lessons and things like that, but that's putting more pressure on the other sixth grade teachers at Williams. I didn't know if there's if there's some way it can be split where they can do it half year and half year. Like, uh, Mr. Burnett can go to Glenbrook half year for the sixth graders. And then Williams can have like, like you mentioned, maybe writing, that'd be amazing. And then uh, he could switch to Williams in the spring or, I mean, whatever, whatever season works. And then Glenbrook students could do like a, an additional writing thing. I I'm just, I want it to be as fair as possible. I feel like already, um, the sixth graders at Williams last year missed out, you know, having half the time and then ended up not having a teacher for, was it a couple of months? I think.
Was the STEAM instruction was shared across the two middle schools last year with with the
And uh, it was, it was more integrated last year, too, at Williams, right? I'm just wondering to make it as fair as possible for sixth graders across the district, no matter which school they go to. They're getting um, the same experience in STEAM. Um, it's 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 so important and more and more students are are getting involved in it. And you know, I feel like um, Mr. Burnett's really good at bringing out the best in the students and having it be like a really fun, exciting time. I mean, a lot of the projects that they did, um, I'd love for this year for maybe them to come and and present some of them. They were fantastic. And I guess I just want the students at Williams have that same opportunity. So I don't know if something can be worked out or not. Obviously, that's up to the administration, but if it can, where it can be um, more equal, that would be ideal.
Yeah. Why don't you give us, take some time over the next week or two and explore what is to
Sorry, we looked at it like on a, you know, on a daily basis or weekly basis, could we switch back and forth with that workout? But um, I hadn't really thought about half year, half year. So there's probably some contractual stuff we need to think about with that, but at this point.
And then also the idea of every sixth grader getting a half year of writing on the other end is like a seems like a win win for Seems like a win-win for both middle schools, getting um. The experience, the same experience with the STEAM and then also all sixth graders getting uh, some additional. Writing time if possible. Obviously I'll leave that up to administrators and their scheduling things and stuff like that, but it's just a thought.
A good one. Thanks.
We'll uh, work on that one and bring it back in the next meeting. Uh, let's go to Mary and then Gianna.
I've been wondering about, is there a teacher that is identified that will be reading the STEAMs inside Williams or. Is it going to be a teacher that is already present there, you know?
Yeah, so there, there is one teacher on the team who um, was thinking about doing it kind of a, a full-time and I think has decided that. She would take the lead. They've already developed some lessons, some units of study in STEAM for next year based on last year. So.
Is she the writing teacher?
No, no, no. Yeah, with, it's within their core subjects. They were the core content areas. So they may develop a cross-curriculum unit that, you know, includes a, a STEM or STEAM project and they'll. They'll, they'll put it into either social studies or science, or they'll, you know, go across all, all four. It's a separate course, right? Yeah, no, no problem.
Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to offer, I know that we are, uh, I know that I'm not an elementary school, but um. We do that with our art, our, our teacher who share an art teacher with another um, school. And so it is, it's half, half year with us and then half year. Um, with the other school and it's a very successful model. We love it and they also do. When they're not having art, they do the, the academic intervention. So it's really great.
I think that, you know, one of the targets for me is it, you know, we, we don't want it to be a, a lesser experience for sure. Uh, might it need to be a different experience just given schedules and staffing? Um, and, and you know, at one school, a more integrated cross-disciplinary STEAM experience versus more of a. Standardized experience at, at the other schools. So, but. We'll take some time and see if any of the, the recommendations that you have for us, if they make sense and if that's something we can put in place to. You know, create a, an even experience. It's always challenging to create identical experiences given, you know, the, the different staffing arrangements at each school, but. We'll definitely take a peek at that and bring it back.
Yeah, I, I think this, this is one of those cases where. You know, we put program delivery sometimes before what's the goal of the program. And so I think when I, you know, from what I've seen, because we experienced, you know, what it looks like. When we went and did the retreat, well, some of us did, um, did the retreat and really what the. Goal of the program is to develop the ability of students to implement design thinking. There's a set of competencies that can actually be developed around that, that you could clearly articulate. And if the program delivery has to be different, that's fine, as long as the goals of the program are clearly defined. Um, quality is always, you know, a concern, obviously, and so time doesn't necessarily equal quality. I think we have to think about what is going to be the best quality experience for the goals of the program. And the goals of the program being what skills are the students actually going to um. Be competent in at the end of the experiences. So they don't have to be the same. They don't have to be. Time-related, but they do have to be of a quality where every student has the ability to experience and learn. Those and, and internalize those, those design thinking competencies. So I, I just from, from that standpoint, I think. Again, we get very quick to like identify the method versus what are the goals and then backwards design from that. We have to do the design thinking that um, we're, we're asking students to um, participate in. So. I, I, if I can implore the, the administration to think with that in mind, with those overall goals in mind, then you can back those design from there.
That, that makes me think about um, the schedule at the middle school and uh, the summer. A, a very small committee has started to look at the schedule at the middle school just for these reasons, right? Um, I'm a huge fan of integrating those, these kinds of things into the classroom. It, it makes meaning for students and. Um, they, they learn a lot that way. They learn to engineer their way through uh, all kinds of things, whether it be ELA or science or social studies. And so. Um, those are the kinds of things that the scheduling committee will grapple with and hopefully come present to the school committee a schedule that, that really makes sense. For just that kind of thing. What are, what are the, what are our goals for our students? Like, what do our students at middle school need? To learn, to know, to be able to do to head to high school and beyond. So hopefully. But hopefully this isn't a one-year temporary.
Oh, thanks. Just kind of a follow-up to what Mary was asking. Um. So basically each sixth grade teacher is gonna be responsible for delivering the STEAM lesson. To their like social studies class or whatever it is they decide, or is there gonna be like a separate? Class? I'm confused.
So the sixth grade team will decide together, several units, um, integrating STEM and STEAM into their current classroom. So they'll, they'll model it. With what they're doing now, but they're not going to have a separate, they won't stop teaching social studies. They have a separate STEAM class. They'll, they'll combine the two.
Okay, that's so just a whole way different experience than the kids are getting at Glenbrook, which is just. Very concerning to me. I, I really, really hope that um. Something can be worked out. And also I, I just, I just think that's, I appreciate the sixth grade teachers at Williams. Uh, being willing to take that on, but I think that's a lot for them. Um, especially coming back after this year and a half of not having the students as often as possible. Um. I think that's, you know, a lot for them and the students are also. Missing out significantly.
Suzie.
I, I agree with that. I, and I, and I also think that, you know, as much as we could. Utilize the, the additional supports that Gianna was identifying, I think. You know, people who actually like, you know, study this and teach it. Um, would, would probably be beneficial to so, to at least offer some support um, in this work. Not, not saying that the sixth grade teachers aren't capable. I'm not, you, you know, and we, we aren't, you know, directly tied to the program or what they're planning. But I think um, in the, in the absence of really understanding. How they'll get to the same outcomes, the same goals. It just seems like it is a very divergent, um, you know, process for each school.
Totally. Hoping to get some consultants to come in, maybe do some planning sessions with the sixth grade, look at their, you know, map out their year, see where things might fit best. Um, hoping for a club. I get that that's not the same as, you know, having it every day, five days a week, but at least something in addition to. What's being offered and I feel the same way that, that you do. Um. But we are, we shook the trees, we've called professors, we've, you know, so.
I think if, if we can continue to work across schools on, on the key standards and, and. There are opportunities, however it's delivered, there are opportunities for kids to address the standards, the STEAM, the, the um. The, the tech ed standards, then I think that, that would be critical for us, but. Why don't you give us some time, we'll, we'll regroup and, and, and do some thinking on it and, and talk to uh. Beth Nelson and, and see if we can come up with some, some approaches that make sense.
Yeah, I just wanna be able to. Tell parents, you know, don't worry, your, your student is getting the same experience as the sixth grade students at Glenbrook and. Like I said, not that the teachers at Williams aren't capable of doing that. It's just um, much less time. Um, and they have a lot of other things to focus on. It's just. Um, hopefully something can be worked out.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, Sue, I had originally. Went to raise my hand because I just wanted to thank you and Mr. Willis, Wills?
Mr. Wilson, yeah.
Who's the other fella you mentioned?
Um, Mike Evans is the special ed person.
For, for coming up with these um, the, this, the summer program that is, has a focus on and a purpose of. You know, a little bit of a refresher, but actually looking forward for students for the, for their next year that they're going into. I, you know. I appreciate that. I know that we had conversations as a group and I know you and I have spoken, but um. You know, just to, to three of you and all, and all the people that were involved with that because it's, you know, it's huge. So thank you.
It's huge. I was surprised at how huge it is, the amount of students who have come. Yep.
Yeah, thank you, Gianna. I, I agree. I mean, I know that the whole committee thanks everybody involved in all of the, the summer work. So, yeah. It's a, it's great that we're able to offer that. Other comments or questions for Sue?
All right, uh, chair report. Uh, just, I, I think I just have two things. So number one, I, I, I wanna reiterate. You know, sort of the way Ryan ran things last year, which is to remind folks, uh, you know, we're, we're a community. And the most important thing we can do as a community right now, so that we can stop talking about COVID, which we all wanna do. Is for everybody who's eligible to get vaccinated. Please, please, please get vaccinated. Um, if your kids are eligible, get your kids vaccinated. And, you know, we saw the numbers early in the meeting. Uh, we're doing great. Um, let's keep it up, right? Let's just keep getting those numbers up because that's the most important thing that we can do. So we can keep our kids and our, our faculty and our staff in school. Um, and then the second thing, I, I just wanna reflect a little bit. If we think about where we were last year. We weren't anywhere close to talking about getting kids back into school buildings, right? Like we were talking about. Remote teaching, hybrid teaching. Um, I think it's just important to recognize like right now. We're getting all of our kids back in school, five days a week. Um, and yeah, the mask issue is a tough one, but our kids are going to be in school with their teachers and our teachers are not gonna be teaching hybrid. Um, so I think that's a huge difference from where, where a year ago and, and I, we worked. Really well together last year to get to where we are now, and I know we're gonna continue to do that this year. So, um, yeah, all right, enough for me. We don't have a student rep report, uh, other reports. Do we have anything from LPVEC? Looks like a no. Okay, um. Uh, we do not have anything from energy and sustainability today, open space. Okay, all right. So we are done with our administrative reports. We have no subcommittee reports. We have one bit of ongoing business, which is the school committee's summer meeting schedule. Um, and, and again, our goal here is to meet soon so that we can figure out what we're doing. Uh, with our masking requirements and, and I will uh, apologize at the fore, which is I am. Uh, in a tent on Cape Cod next week, so I am not going to be able to participate. And so I, I apologize for making. Things difficult for the rest of you. Um, but Marty, I think you might have a recommendation for how to proceed.
Well, we have, um, you have a, a regularly scheduled meeting on the twenty-fourth of August. Um. Convocation of staff is the next day. So if we were to. Wait until the twenty-fourth, that might be bumping up against our opening a little too tightly. Uh, a consideration could be to have a meeting on the twenty-third, Monday the twenty-third. There's no select board meeting that night. Uh, I don't know if it would fit everybody's schedules. Um, alternatively. We could proceed with a, a meeting either Tuesday or Thursday of next week. Um. For the administrative team Wednesday night won't work, but Tuesday or Thursday might, but I, I think if. You were open to a meeting on, on Monday, the twenty-third, that might be, that might be helpful. It would give us some additional time to digest some of the guidance that's coming out. Um, it would give us some additional time to understand um, the intentions of the order health. They have a meeting, you heard tonight, they have a meeting on the sixteenth. So if they had a meeting on the sixteenth, it might be tough to, to turn it around. For you to have a meeting on the seventeenth. So uh, that additional week to have a meeting on the twenty-third. Might be beneficial, but I understand that's uh, throwing a curveball potentially at your schedules. So. I'll sit back and listen.
Uh, Marty, just is, is that gonna give you and your team enough time if we meet on the twenty-third? That seems uh, pretty tight.
I think. You know, we'll, we'll be planning for any eventuality because the reality is whatever you decide. You know, potentially we'll have to, similar to last year, we'll, we'll have to be prepared to pivot the other way, either to a. A more restrictive or a, a less restrictive arrangement. So we'll be ready to go.
Can, can we just do a, a, excuse me, a thumbs up on the twenty-third if that's gonna work for people? Do, I'm not seeing any thumbs down. Uh, and then we're banking on this working for Nicole. Um, so I mean, Marty, if, if you think it's gonna work for your team, that sounds like a pretty good solution.
Yeah, so, I, I do think that will work.
Okay, um. I, I'm assuming we don't need a motion and we can just be like, yeah, we're doing it on the twenty-third and everybody here is good with that? Okay, so again, just to reiterate, we will not have a meeting on the twenty-fourth. We will instead have a meeting on the twenty-third. We're not going twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Okay, good. Excellent. Uh, yeah. Um, we have one item of new business. We have a facility use request and uh, normally we throw this over. To Tom. Uh, so Tom, I think you're up.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, and good evening, everyone. So it has definitely been a while since we've had any building use. Uh, especially for outside groups, uh, to come in to use our buildings. Um, so, but we do have a couple of requests. On the agenda tonight. I think it's important to note that whatever mitigation strategy the committee adopts would also apply to. Outside groups that are using our facilities. Um, the first of the three requests is for the. Springfield Symphony Youth Orchestra. Uh, finance subcommittee did. Uh, discuss this back in June and they were, uh, there were some questions in regards to the request that they'd asked. For some more information on there. There are a, a long list of dates. It's about thirty plus dates throughout the course of the year that. Uh, the organization is looking for use of space in the high school. Um, and so there was some concern about the commitment from the district for that length of time. Uh, the high school administration and music program is in support of um. Uh, letting or approving the use for the youth orchestra. Um, they previously were rehearsing at the height, the Holyoke Community College, but as part of Holyoke. Uh, reopening plan, they are no longer um, allowing outside groups to rent their facilities. So they've been looking for schools that members of their or, the youth orchestra come from. As an all, a site for them to hold their rehearsals. And they've heard so many good things about our facilities. Um, that they inquired about using this, uh, as you can see back at the beginning of June. So um, there are a hundred and thirty or so participants that would be here um, during the rehearsals. There are some of the, some of the areas of the request that we cannot accommodate. For instance, storage is definitely an area we don't have available for them. We also are unsure whether or not we can commit to the dates in May. As we normally host a number of dance recitals starting in early May that go through the spring. So. Uh, they are aware of these uh, these concerns or, or inability to. Uh, commit to them for those requests, but um, so that is uh, the first request. The second would be for, Kevin, I'm not sure if you wanna handle them on a, on a request by request basis?
Yeah, Tom, that one's, that one's pretty complicated, so why don't we just? Yeah, Tom, that one's that one's pretty complicated. So why don't we just go with that one first? Um, so comments or questions on that one? Gianna.
Thank you, Kevin. Thanks, Tom, for that um overview. I'm just wondering, so we're talking about Sunday, Sunday nights in particular, and we're talking about a hundred and thirty students in the, you know, the auditorium, the classroom and the multipurpose room. I'm not sure which classroom or multipurpose room, but um is this going to put any extra strain on custodians getting ready for Monday? That's a lot of kids. You know, we're sitting here all talking about, you know, mask, not masking, cleaning strategies and um, I don't, do you have any, can you speak to that or?
Yeah, I mean, we would, I mean, normally we would build in time on the back end of the request time to give custodians ample time to clean the space bathrooms in the common area where individuals may be. Um, again, there may need to be additional time if there are additional mitigation cleaning strategies we need to uh to employ at the conclusion of the rental each Sunday. Um, but they, we did let them know that, you know, we would need additional custodial custodial time outside of their rental request. We also briefed them on how much that was going to cost because on Sundays, it's double time for the custodians to be here. So there is a, there is a substantial financial commitment on their part for the dates, the number of dates that they're requesting. I gotta be honest, I don't know that we've ever had a request that that's kind of gone this length of time or the number of occasions that this group is requesting.
Thank you, Tom.
Suzy.
So, just so I'm clear, I have two questions. The first question is, they're aware that we cannot provide storage?
Yes.
And they're still prepared to use the, to use the facility?
They say they are.
Okay. And so that's been, whatever proposal they've submitted, I'm not seeing on the proposal, they're asking their their, the storage piece has been removed from their proposal because I don't see it anywhere?
Correct.
Okay, I just.
We would not include it on the permit that we would then give them if it's approved, if the request is approved.
Okay.
Or it would not be something that would be included.
Right. I don't, I don't see anything here that identifies storage anymore, but I, but that multipurpose room might be what they're.
I think it was in the additional notes, like at the very bottom of the request, Suzy.
No, I'm just, I didn't, it's uh, I can, oh, we would like to request storage. Got it. Okay. Yeah, I that was like one little thing. I thought it would be more more prominent. Sorry, I must have missed that. Um, okay, so that, well, that's good to know. So that's, that's the one thing I needed to know. The second thing I'm curious about is have we thought about um segmenting the dates? So in other words, we only approve ten days first. And then we see how it's going. And then we make a decision to, for the next ten dates. Um, just from the standpoint of that is a very, that's a lot of days to take up a um spaces and may bump up again. I I mean, it it sounds like this, the high school is okay with this in the high school music department, but I'm just wondering if it would make any sense to sort of phase it so that we, we approve only a segment of the dates at a time.
I think that we most certainly could propose that to them. Um, I would suspect if I were in their shoes, I would just ask that they're that I they receive enough notice so that if we're not going to extend it, they have the opportunity to find another venue that they can move to. So whatever time that might be, I don't, you know, I don't know if they need a month or six weeks, but we most certainly could tell them, we're comfortable approving it through, say, November or October, and we would commit that, uh, we would give you at least a a month's notice if we're not willing to extend it beyond that, to give them time to look for another place. So.
Yeah, and I think that's sort of to to Gianna's point about, is it a strain and stress on our own facilities, right? Like, is it, is it also, you know, um, causing any other issues that, you know, make Monday morning a challenge for for our folks in the in the high school?
Sure.
Thanks.
Gianna.
Thanks, Kevin. Yes, Suzy, I was thinking the same thing and and I just counted and actually through, I was thinking through, you know, the end of the year, so December, through December nineteenth date, that'd be fourteen sessions. So, you know, four more than you're talking about, but um, it it would be, from my way of thinking, would be a nice, you know, segment to end it, or to re reconsider it after that December nineteenth date.
Tom. Mary, I'm sorry, I didn't hear a word she said.
So, Tom, uh, what Mary was saying um was if there are, if we do have a a universal masking requirement, how would it affect this group? Obviously, difficult to perform a concert with a mask on if you're singing.
Yeah, I, it may, may have them reconsider using the facility if that is one of the mitigation strategies that is in place. So um, I think if if we move forward with an approval tonight, we most certainly can let them know that um, we have not taken any steps yet, but that may change on August twenty third. And they may choose to uh go to another facility if they don't want, you know, if they're, they feel that that um, makes it difficult for them to use the high school for rehearsals. So absolutely, it most certainly could impact their decision to move forward with executing um, use of the facility.
Gianna.
Is that something, Kevin, are we able to table the, the approval of this particular request? Maybe even until after the August twenty third? I just feel like we need more information from them in response to what we're talking about here and then with the August twenty third information. Is it possible to table this request?
So my recommendation was going to be exactly that, um, because I don't see how, I I don't understand why we would vote on something that we don't even know what our policy is going to be. Um, so I I think that would be my recommendation to wait on this until we have a mask policy, go back to them and say, this is our mask policy. Are you even interested? Um, so I I I like that idea a lot, Gianna. And Tom, do you do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, just I think they're in a difficult position, not knowing whether to wait or try to pursue somewhere else. And um, getting closer to their first, they they it just may impact their schedule in terms of if they are unable to use the high school facility here, uh finding somewhere else. I don't know that they're having much luck. Um.
Yeah, and they're probably not having much luck because every other school committee is in the same position we're in. And I really have no interest in us being hasty because of an outside group. I think we need to make the decision that we need to make. And if they need to wait, I mean, it's really unfortunate. If it were a normal year, we could give them an answer and then they could move on and and either be here or not be here. But I uh again, I'm just one person on the committee, but I'm personally uninterested in feeling pressure from an outside group. Uh, I just have no interest in that. Um, and I think if the other committee members are are feeling similarly, I I think we just need to table this and and then get their response after we make our decision. I I'm seeing some head nods.
I agree with that.
Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, I I agree with what you're saying. Waiting until the twenty third is fine. The only thing I don't understand with what everybody's saying is if we have orchestra or people in music class here, if we have a mask policy, you're still taking off the mask to play the instrument. So the mask policy is to walk into the classroom with it on, take it off, play the instrument, put it back on when you're not playing the instrument. So that I don't like follow. I agree that I think we should say, hey, are you good with fourteen? But the mask policy, I I hear you, but I don't. Um, is it, uh, you know, wherever you are, you've got to take the mask off to play the instrument. So we're doing that in turn. That is the policy. It's going to be, you know, when you eat lunch, you're not eating lunch with a mask on. You're taking the mask off, you're being appropriate, eating, putting it back on. It's the same thing. Um, I I would say I agree with you to the extent that I'd like a little bit more detail. Are they good with fourteen? Or exactly what Suzy and Gianna were saying. If they're good with that, then we can consider it. But, you know, before, I wouldn't want to vote on it before I knew they were okay with that. So.
Yeah, we can inquire.
I'm I'm curious to know whether we're worried about the mask policy or the guidance for music because there's also separate guidance for music and orchestra and singing. And I know we're expecting something to come from the Department of that soon about that. I don't know that it will change, you know, um, but last year we were, that was shut down for quite a while, so.
And and I I know that in Jamie, our our music, uh, at least our choral music program, they sang outside. They did not take their masks off and sing inside. Um, so I I think it is important to understand what the policy means for choral music, instrumental music. I mean, I know my niece did a performance in Suffield and all of the wind instruments, they were wearing masks while playing their wind instruments, which I still think that's difficult to wrap my head around, but they were wearing masks that had a small hole in it and that's how they did it, right? So there are a whole bunch of things that are going on here that are complicated. Yeah.
Great. Um, then moving on to the next request, it's from the Wolf Swamp PTA for the annual um turkey trot that they hold. Um, so it is a request for the Wolf Swamp uh cafeteria and parking lots on November twenty seventh from nine until one P M. Um, this is something that uh I know they've been holding for a number of years uh at Wolf Swamp and uh we provided approval for them in the past.
Comments or questions? Then I think we are ready for a vote.
I move that the school committee approve the facility use request from the Wolf Swamp Road School PTA dated August fifth, twenty twenty one, to use the Wolf Swamp Road School cafeteria and parking lot on Saturday, November twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, for their annual turkey trot.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Mary.
Yes.
Bronwyn.
Yes.
Uh, Suzy.
Yes.
Gianna.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
And yes for me.
And the last request is from the uh Pejarty Association of Western Mass. Um, they listed both October ninth or tenth on the request. Um, I believe that Prepenses for Saturday, October ninth. Um, they are looking to hold a um, a cultural dance festival at Clumbrook Middle School from three to eleven and are requesting use of the gym, the cafeteria and uh the kitchen, which would require them to also hire uh some kitchen, a kitchen staff person to be on site while they are using the kitchen. Um, this group is new to the lawmeadow. Uh, we have not, um, they have not used our facilities in the past. So this would be our first time renting out space to them.
Comments or questions?
Yes, sorry.
Uh, Gianna, go ahead then, Suzy.
I'm wondering if this is a similar situation to the other one in terms of we might want to let them know that, you know, they might be wearing masks during their dance if that's what our policy ends up being. So I don't know if we want to also table this one and give them the opportunity to think about, you know, waiting until the after the twenty third to see what the policy is going to be.
Suzy.
I would agree.
Uh, anyone opposed to tabling this request as well? All right, so Tom, you good with that?
I am, but thank you.
And and Tom, that was it?
That is it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, there is a recommended motion for adjournment.
I move that the school committee adjourn the June twenty ninth, oh, June twenty ninth, August tenth, twenty twenty one, school committee meeting.
I was just to see if you were paying attention.
Yeah, I was paying attention.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mary.
Yes.
Bronwyn.
Yes.
Suzy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gianna.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
And yes for me. Uh, thank you to everyone for joining us and we'll see you next time.